Thank you for joining us this evening for the April sixth, twenty twenty-three, Montessorino Joint Special Meeting of the City Council and Community Center Committee meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few principles to assist council members, commissioners, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom has been used to allow public participation with this joint special meeting with the City Council and Community, Community Center Committee meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and race scan. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member or commissioner speaking. Please use race scan to be recognized as a mayor and able to speak. Any attendees using the Zoom application can use the race scan option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, when we are not all in the same room, all those in this meeting must be taken by roll call.
Thank you. I would like to call the Joint Special Meeting of the City Council and the Community Center Committee to order at six ten P M. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Yes. For City Council, Councilmember Turner, absent. Councilmember Craig, absent. Councilmember Lahey.
Present.
Vice Mayor Wolsheimer.
Present.
Mayor Megachuck.
Present.
Thank you.
We have a call.
You have a call. For our Community Center Committee, Public Member Harrington.
Present.
Public Member Allen, absent. Public Member Brangancy, absent. Commissioner Zidler.
Present.
Commissioner White, absent. Vice Mayor Wolsheimer.
Present.
Mayor Megachuck.
Present. We have a call. With that, we have a very simple agenda tonight. Basically, it's a study session regarding the current design of the community center floor pick floor plan, features, and cost estimates. And we've got some documents that were filed in the packet being the community center plans, certain sheets of those and renderings. We have the community center cost estimate and funding. And then also, we received a public comment before the meeting. And what I'd like to do is have this as a discussion. It's a study session. There's no decision required. What we're trying to do is make sure that that as the community center progresses, that we're communicating amongst ourselves and with the public so that we're fully transparent and everyone sees the input. And I will say that I was delighted to receive the public comment from Mr. Bill Wall. And what I'd like to do is say that we'll address the points that he raised at the back end of the meeting. So we will go through his public comments and it's great to get that input. So Gary, the floor is yours to talk through the the plans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I welcome everybody here. I thank you for coming to the special meeting. I part of what we'd like to do is to just kind of update you on our progress and also speak about what our next steps are going to be and as well as some of the fun things and the challenges that we have facing us. Right? And so just a really simple recap of where we are today. We've had a couple, three or four meetings with the Community Center Committee. And it's been very fruitful. The meetings have had a lot of great feedback. We have made changes as a result of that and my team feel really good about the direction that we're going in, and I think that the committee does as well. To kind of go over this, if you want to go to the next slide. Thank you. The, just to bring everybody up to speed. We are keeping, retaining the existing post office. The old post office structure. And we're making additions and remodels to this structure. One of the reasons, the key reason why we're keeping the structure is that it has a non-conforming setback on the Rose Avenue side. And at recent development, we had, we had the site surveyed again, and the updated survey actually showed that the the Highway nine side, we are in conformance, the building itself, the porch is encroaching into the required setback. But the structure itself is not the structure proper. And the one of the plans is actually to remove that porch. So we are actually bringing this more into compliance, but if we, you know, we looked at this a while back and the onset of just tearing it down and starting over. And minus the sentimental little part of keeping this structure. Everybody's seen this building for many, many years. It it also serves a purpose. We're keeping more than fifty percent of the structure, the roof, the walls. And we work with this structure in a way that it's it's compliant. It's it's an existing non-conforming structure that we haven't increased that non-conformity. And so the way that the planning department looks at this is that this is totally acceptable. This would be something that any of the residents could do as well that happens often where we have a non-conforming situation, as long as you're not removing more than fifty percent of that structure, you can keep that. And as long as you're not increasing that non-conformity, we can keep it. And so that was a key decision to move forward with remodeling and adding on to this existing structure rather than starting completely new. The other main thing that we have in when looking at the overall building is there's a, there's a code that in in on the books that requires a separation between buildings on a property in the city of Montessorino, and we are holding that gap between the existing town hall, city hall, and and the our addition to pretty much the minimum requirements. And what that does, that that actually provides a walkway for people, pedestrians and bicyclists and and others coming off of off the main road and and they don't have to walk all the way around the building. And I think that's a great thing to do is encourage pedestrian activity. And then also, it it allows the the flow up to the front yard, the front landscape area, which should be really enjoyable with a whole new landscape. And so that connection, we thought, was was kind of vital between the two buildings as a result of us not being able to connect the two buildings together. We can, and we can talk more about that after, when we, when we talk about Mr. Bill Wallace's letter as well. So but I just kind of wanted to just kind of bring everybody up to speed on on the thinking and the direction and some of the rationale that we started with, and that's where we are today. So it also has a covered veranda that is, is a really nice outdoor space that that has bifolding doors that open the interior space of the addition into this veranda. And then we have a new set of parking just in front of the building. This restripping it to to better conform with to required parking and also our our ADA access aisle that would be next to ADA parking spot that goes into the front doors. And and again, the front doors are faced to the parking lot, much like City Hall has done, taking the front door off of the street and bringing it into the parking lot. So this also has that same connection to the parking lot. And we basically have only windows on the street sides and no doors. So that that was a decision that we made through the committee to to limit access to this into the parking lot. You can go to the next slide if you would. And and I could stop at any time. If anybody has any questions, please, you know, raise your hand or virtual hand or whatever, and I'd be happy to slow down. So.
You, the the pathway at the front, you haven't done a landscaping plan yet. This is illustrative, not?
That's great for clarification purposes. Yes, we, we just threw a placeholder in there just because you know, we can't help ourselves. We wanted to do something. We do have something we have to, since we're getting rid of the drive aisle between the two buildings, and that's a great point to to mention to close that out. We now have a parking, a a street that goes nowhere, goes into our building. So we have asphalt that has to get taken up and re and landscape, right? And so this was just a suggestion that we have. And and the design committee has looked at it and liked it, but I think that once we've worked with a landscape architect, that will flush out and come to fruition on its own.
With some type of signage.
With some type of signage, possibly this arbor that we create like an entrance, visual entrance point, a welcoming entrance between the two buildings. That's what we show there as well. Yeah, and the signage is very important, right?
Just a kind of a sign. You said there's a minimum distance you have to maintain between the length and the width of the quarter.
And that's a code. Yeah, we have to have eight feet between buildings. Isn't that, I think that was put in many, many years ago, maybe to address fire code transfers, but it's also I'm not going to question who or why did it, but it's it's been on the books for for a long, long time in Montes Reno, as long as I can remember.
Your suggestion is to keep that input for other reasons other than the code. Because the code requires.
Well, I think that.
Required to do, put them created.
I don't know. I don't know, because once you start to connect the buildings, then you have a whole another set of issues. And I think that we are it 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 changes everything. And and we'd have to look at whether that would be allowed. We'd have to add planning. If that will be allowed in the sense that now we're connecting the the city hall to the structure that has a non-conforming setback. And that may make it more complex. It may complicate the situation. And and we've run into that in multiple projects over the years where you have a detached garage that's that's non-conforming setback, and you want to attach your house to that garage. And all of a sudden, now the house has got a non-conforming setback because that's the structure. So I don't know. I mean, obviously, you've got your, you know, you, you guys have ultimate power to make some decisions if you could find variances or ways to get around it. If if that presented itself, the code that didn't allow us to do that, then it would, it would come up to cancel. And and I'm not saying that that is a is a hard stop, but it's something that we would certainly have to do some serious.
That's what Ours Limited is going to do.
Yes.
So we can, we can discuss that. Thank you.
But I, I, you do raise a good question and in the history of going through the meetings with the committee, one of the designs was to have a smaller addition, if I recall correctly, and then the committee said, make as many square feet as you could out of the building, like make it as big as you could. And that that was one of the iteration. Can you talk to that one, please?
Absolutely. Yeah. So I think we started with a smaller addition. We actually had more takeaway space as well. And we've reallocated what we had after meeting with the committee. Our initial design and then modified to preserve the entirety of the footprint of the existing building. And then our addition is as large as we could go in two directions for practical purposes. The width of the addition matches exactly the width of the original post office before the the addition to the front was made to the, to the parking lot side. And that's another ten feet. So it's basically twenty-four, twenty feet and ten feet. So we made the addition twenty feet wide, and that was to keep the roof perfectly aligned with the existing room. As soon as you go wider, then you complicate the roofing, and then maybe we can't save all the roofing or nothing went into the demolition calculations as well. And so we were just trying to be really smart and practical with this width of addition, and that width is a nice size for the room itself. The length of it, the 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 connection, the width, or the, I guess, is the the length going left to right on your screen went about as far as we could is, I want to say it's twenty-two, twenty-three feet, something like that. Yeah, the next slide would show that. But I can't quite see that. But anyway, we went as far as we can to to the other building without, without within being in compliance, right? And that was something that the committee wanted. As much, if we go ahead and make it as long as we can, because it it cost-wise is 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 negligible, negligible to add another foot or two at that point.
You spoke a little bit, but I want to really make sure I understand. So originally, we decided to remodel rather than rebuild because of the non-conforming dimensions, right, of the building? And and we were deciding based on the old survey, and now we got a new survey that we're not as non-conforming as we thought. And I I just want to make sure, I think people will ask us, why didn't you start fresh? And I want to make sure I really understand how much we're preserving by just remodeling. Because we give up something, we're mixing old material, you know, new materials with old. You know, it probably won't be as fireproofed as if we were starting fresh, you know, off the blown insulation, those kinds of things. Given the new survey. I mean, have we looked at it fresh of whether it still makes the most sense to remodel rather than rebuild?
That's a great question, and I think that that certainly should be discussed and the reason why we're doing it this way. And what I can say is that the setback on Rose Avenue didn't change. The surveyor was off in the east-west direction. And so our newer updated survey only affects the setback along Highway nine.
Could you go back one, one sheet, please? Because then you can point it out.
Right. So the, in line with the addition of our of the door structure and where the where the porch was, that and you can see a dashed blue line that that cuts across the city hall. Which is labeled town hall, because Montes Reno is a nice, cute town, but it's a city. The, the, this, the city building itself is is not conforming by that, that, that much, but there's a thirty-foot setback as per zone. And so that structure is actually inconformance right now. The are the the addition and the, the, the the post office building, the old building meets the setback requirements on the front. It just doesn't on the side, and you can see it's a twenty-two foot, six inch setback required from the right property line of Rose Avenue.
So the property line is the red line.
The property line is a heavy red line.
And so going to to the east from there or to the left.
To the left, which is south, it's it's the dashed blue line again indicates the required setbacks. And so that building is, is, we found out that it's eighteen feet in the upper corner. So eighteen to twenty-two is four and a half feet you'd lose on that upper corner and and you would want to make the building square, and so you'd lose four and a half feet of building by thirty feet. So you lose a hundred and twenty square feet of the existing structure. If you started.
Four and a half, like thirty? Oh, the whole length of it.
Correct. Because the whole, that whole length is is sitting in the setback. That's been here for so long. It's been there. So it's not like someone did cheat it or did something wrong. It's just been here forever and and maybe they didn't even think about it. I don't know. So, but it is, it's, it's what we're, what we have. And so often we'll use that to our advantage. And I think that it makes sense if we can, if we don't compromise on this building in the end. And we've met with a structural engineer on site, and he has agreed that our assumptions of how we can do the structure on the remodel are are totally acceptable and 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 will make, we won't have any issues with structure here. As far as fire goes, this building, whether it's existing or new, will all be built to the most current standards and most current energy standards and the most current waterproofing standards. And so all of those concerns, I I don't have any of the concerns that this building would be any less robust than it would be if we built it new. The foundations are fine. We're going to have have a new brand-new slab floor. And everything meets ADA and we also preserve some of this, which is also a good thing from sustainability standpoint. We are preserving the whole roof, the entire roof of the building we're preserving and the roof framing. We're preserving all the exterior wall framing. So there is quite a bit we're, we're preserving, and I think it's, it's significant enough to to actually, if we were just if it was just like, you know, lip service, then you could make a case that, hey, you're not, you're not really saving anything. But I think that you are. I really do. And then you can, you can quantify how much you are saving versus how much you're taking away. So from a sustainability standpoint, you know, we're not putting all that to the landfill. So that's all in the spirit of this, I think, of this whole community center going forward. Just taking some of the past.
You mentioned a whole bunch of things. I assume it's also earthquake proof, except for.
Yes. Oh, yeah, hundred percent. Oh, yeah, yeah. This is, that was probably the number one thing we need to do is 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 look at the seismic strength of the building.
And I kind of understand this design. So is the post office moving up ten feet? The building is out there in the ground, or is that staying at the same place?
So the existing building will stay, remain where it is. And even the the porch that you, you, it is, maybe you could go to the next slide. And get it, yeah. So you can see where you can't really see the the existing building to the new building in this drawing. But you can see where it says existing covered porch on the bottom of the page.
Okay.
That is, that's existing. And so that's the roof that extends out over that, and there's five posts, five columns. All we're doing is taking out two of the five columns to to make a little more openness there. And so we're saving that entire structure. So what, a long time ago, a ten-foot addition was made to this building. And it was made on the level of basically the parking lot. And that's, that's down almost thirty inches from the raised floor of the original city hall that you entered from the Highway nine to the street side, and you had to ramp up to get there. And so what we're doing, we're actually going to cut out that whole portion of the raised floor area. We'll take all the wood flooring out. And we will then, you know, excavate a little bit, but you already have the crawl space there. So we have minimal excavation. And we'll report a brand-new concrete slab that will tie into the existing footings and hopefully it was a nice, level, solid permanent flooring that's appropriate for a building like that. And all, and as well as doing all of our structural upgrades to the building.
So good. Thank you. Yeah.
I have just a technical question. So what are we zoning here? Because I'm looking on the zoning map, and this is public. So how do you know what zoning regulations you have to follow if it's R one A?
We checked with planning and they gave us the zoning, they gave us the setbacks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I think it's interesting that we're just called public on that one, our zone, you know? Can we get to make home?
Is it worth asking?
Let's go, yeah.
I guess you work with contractors all the time, so you know their take on things a lot. Is it worth asking contractors if it's faster or cheaper to rebuild, or do you just have such a good hold on how they see remodel versus rebuild? I just, anecdotally, you hear people so often when they remodel their home, say, oh, we should have just scraped it. But I don't know the nuts and bolts, which is faster, cheaper, better.
You want my, my, my experience on this?
Yes.
And what in my practice, majority of the time, we find that it's better to tear it down and start over. We've looked at this, my engineers looked at this, we've had a general contractor looked at this, we've had a concrete contractor look at this. Everybody says what we're doing is completely acceptable and doable. I didn't ask the the gentleman, the firm that did our preliminary cost estimate to bid both ways, but it was a lot to ask. If you were going to start over and just build it from scratch, would the, would the cost offset? Or would they be less or more than doing it from from the remodel, the approach that we're taking? I didn't go there because we had all decided we wanted to leave the building where it was and also maintain the building as a whole for and I, I know this sounds funny, but it's a sentimental, sentimentality of it, right? So I would be fine either way. So I'm, I'm completely okay with the approach that we're taking. But if we were going to start over and we just, okay, start from scratch, you know, we can do a similar building like this, or maybe it changes a little bit. I love to do buildings because it's less, there's less unknowns. And 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 there are, you, you, you probably have a better overall of everything. You don't have to deal with anything that's out of level, out of square, out of plumb. You're, you're, you're rocking and rolling, right? This building could probably get knocked down in four hours and hauled away in another four hour, maybe it's a two-day demo at the most. So then you're, then you're, you've foundations and you're going and it's all new. We often do new construction. I I love new construction myself. I do. And the building official likes it and and the contractors like it. But that's not always the right thing to do. So that's something that I, I I would have, I have preferences, but that's something that that is up to the committee to to put forward what they think is the best thing and then to counsel to to, you know, to decide or to to put it back, right? Yeah. So and we did, we did talk about this in our first meeting or two, some about this. I don't know if you recall that, but
Yeah.
a lot of these points were brought up. And everybody said, let's go with, let's keep the building. So.
So I just brought up again because of the new survey.
True.
If you were to start from scratch, would it look very different?
Well, that's a great question. I'm not sure it would. Because I really like the design. I think it's, I think it's really. I think it's I think it's really appropriate. It um and we're all, remember, we are dealing with a a a very uh. Tight site, right? We don't have much room to do anything else anyway. And so. Our approach was to. Yeah, we leave the building, but we it's a blank canvas on the inside, right? And so. Um we don't feel that we were limited much if any by the existing building and it actually had impetus for. Like the where we place things because of the the roof forms and the ceiling forms and everything. And so a lot of it made sense. It was. It was, you know, it was one of those things that it just click. So uh I. It it you I think the only way it would probably change the shape and the layout would be if you. Intended to connect the two buildings. And that that's that's where we go. That then then you're talking, it's a newer project. It's a different project. And then there's and and there's. There's ramifications to that. There there are consequences to doing that. And I'd be happy to talk about those. We can. Talk about them now or we could talk about them. Uh I'd actually just if I can just go through a couple of the things that I wanted to talk about and then we can maybe come back to that. That'd be great. Yeah. That does that work?
That works for me.
Okay, cool. So um. I I just wanted to uh.
Ju- just out of curiosity, do we have any members of the public that have joined?
There is no one else other than um city manager.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to if we should reach out to someone from the public for comments, but.
Okay. Yeah, it's a good time to stop um. And no, no. No comments, okay.
No, no comments.
Okay, great. So. What the next step would be if. We get the approval on this initial design. Um and and the go ahead to take our next steps would be to start on our construction documents. Um that's our uh. That's the phase where we start to, you know, interact with all of our consultants. Um we're putting together the 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 drawings that get checked by the 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 building department and the planning department, engineering. Fire department. And so I have assembled a team, the the people that I work with all the time. And they're all excited to be part of this. I really are. Um and in one case, um my landscape architect has offered his services pro bono. His design services, not his, his 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 staff. Would would be paid by hi- his expertise and his designs he's offering as pro bono. They seemed real excited about it. So we have a landscape architect. I've lined up. I have the structural engineer proposal. He's all ready to go. Um I have the mechanical, electrical and plumbing designer all set up. Um and it's a very ca- it's a small building, but it's complicated because of all the systems that we uh are trying to put into this building. To make this a showcase. Um for uh all the new technologies and the new systems. Um and so uh including gray water and um. Solar and electrical water heating and um and and all the the switching and. And all of that stuff. And so. Um I think it's um we have a an excellent team ready to go. Um and so. We are 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 working on on hopefully getting our the the green light to take that next step. And that would take. Around four weeks because we're we're taking a very aggressive approach to the schedule. Um we uh uh want to get this thing started um. You know, i- i- as fast as we can. And it's a small building, so I would think everybody feels, everybody I've talked to feels that we they can all knock it out in in a timely manner. There are other things that we'll have to do besides all the hard. Nuts and bolts that the engineering part of it. And that's the fun, the really the fun stuff, I think, for the committee. And that's uh the design specifications, the interior finishes. The uh the the lighting, the um you know. Maybe even into the furniture and the window coverings and and those type of things that that as you start to. To to really decorate out this building. It's some of that stuff's gonna needs to go in uh into the. The construction cost. And some of it will. Will be soft goods cost and stuff like that, but maybe the furniture and everything may not be not gonna be in our bid. It's not gonna be in under our uh umbrella, but it'll be something that has to go concurrently so that the committee will have to be working with. Uh vendors on on that as well. So um. Once we get the the drawings done, it'll go into the plan check process. Uh and at that time, we'll also uh put it out to the. To to pre-qualified general contractors. And then once uh all that is all ready to to be open. And a plan check is done and everything's updated, then we will open the bids and uh hopefully award. Uh the the to. The contractor. So but we look forward to those interim meetings between. Start uh starting on our constructed documents base and uh getting it to submitted for bid. Because we have more stuff in the committee to do. And that's that's pretty much where we are right now um. Although it's interesting to to get uh the feedback from the community. Um and uh specifically Omar and um. And it's brought raised up some questions again, right? Are are we going to? Do we want to start over? Uh with the building, we're gonna tear it down and start over? Do we wanna keep this remodel remodel addition as this? Do we want to explore the idea of connecting the two? We did talk about that. Um and we decided not to. Um and I'm and I'm talking with the building official about that. Aside from the idea that we might be non-conforming and 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 maybe. There are ways to talk about the zoning requirements. Uh with staff. With, you know, maybe there's some room to push the buildings out. Right? So.
Can I just ask you a quick question? So it's two different lots, right? What is the?
It's all it's all merged. It's been merged.
It's been merged. Okay, that's our problem.
Been merged into one lot. Oh, I don't know. I think that um.
Cause this one would be in R one eight, right?
They're both R one eight.
They're both R one. The now, but they're both R one eight, actually. That's the zoning that we were told. But since the law is is. Closer to R one twenty, what the city does is that they apply R one twenty rules. So that's why we have R one twenty seven.
But don't you have to be twenty thousand square feet? Are we twenty thousand square feet?
Real close to that.
Okay.
We're closer to the twenty thousand than we are to the eight.
Trying to figure out how to get to the other setbacks, so that's.
Yeah. So that's that's a good point. Um we did.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just one more thing. So, yeah, maybe go ahead. No, go ahead because uh.
I I did wanna welcome another member of the community center committee. Uh that just joined us. Um and I I did wanna go back just. To make sure that this is a study session. We're not making a decision. The the decision ultimately that's in going to be in front of council is to accept the bids or not. That's the decision point for council.
Okay.
But uh what we want would like to do is make sure that. Concerns from the public are raised. And heard as we go through this process and from the committee. That has public representation on it and a study session for council. So they've got the. Ability to ask questions because I'm sure that some of some constituents will contact. Uh Java will contact me, et cetera, and they wanna they want it. To know what's going on. So this is no, when we get to opening the bids, everyone will know. What's included in the package that that they have to award a bid on. So there's no green light at this stage. We are moving ahead based on. Uh what we had decided previous, what previous councils had decided on. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure that we're all.
Thank you. I think that.
Uh you know, in a study session mode. But and sorry, I I interrupted. Go.
No, no, no. I think that was that was very, very nice to hear that explanation.
Um we could do, at this point, we've gone through the plans. And we could. We could. Address uh Omar's issues that he raised. Or we could look at the funding and then. And then deal with Omar's uh issues. Which would you which would the group prefer to do in this study session? Okay.
Okay. So did everybody have a chance to read his letter?
And before you get to that, I had a couple of comments I need to put in here. This is very useful, very helpful. All being here. So time wise, is there a question on whether demolish a building or keep the one that it is? Does that affect uh how long it will take to take the project?
On a building of this size, it's 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 maybe a couple of weeks, maybe.
A couple of weeks more to be demolished?
No, no, it's probably a couple of weeks more if we keep it. But not not significantly.
Okay, okay. Same question has uh one more reason for keeping it is the roof. Is that is this roof compatible for solar or is that uh some some roofs are not as happy with solar as other than that?
Uh we will, this structural engineer will make sure that uh the loading. It it the roof is capable of handling the load of the panels, the weight. Um but we think that the roof has really great exposure options. Um. It has east, south and west. Uh opportunities. And so so to get all three is is really nice. To get the west. Uh exposure on solar panels is becoming more and more important with. Um the uh the time of day that the 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 but the rates go up, right? And so if you can, you know, beginning, you know, generating energy at three, four, five o'clock in the afternoon. And then turning on your air conditioner. Um you're actually, you know, it it's it's great to have that western. It's it's kind of a, it was overlooked for many, many years. So you probably go south, southeast, southwest, south. But now um we're we're trying to get like. Hundred eighty degrees.
So the roof as it is, gives you the exposure you want or?
It does. Only only if um from a structural standpoint is fine. From from a uh uh orientational standpoint um. South is always gonna be giving the most during the day. Um but we have the whole flat roof, so we are, we've already figured out where we're gonna get a lot of our south exposure. And then we have the the other crossroads that go east and west. Yeah, yeah. So we know you could it'd be a completely new roof. Design to in order to get maybe the optimum solar.
How much difference would that make?
I don't think. It would make a lot of difference in the structure. No, I I think we have, we have. A lot of kind of way more than this than that building is gonna use. And the idea is that it can help. Power this structure, right?
Okay, budget wise, uh cost of new building, which is keeping with this one, is there a bunch of difference?
Well, I can't, um I I don't know exact the depth, the delta, because um on this building. Because we didn't bid it that. We only bid it as per plan. So we didn't get a bid if it's a starting over building.
Do you have any estimate?
Uh it's it's really hard to tell. It's a complicated um rebuild, so there's money to that, but we're saving all the roof. You know, and so we're saving a lot of the walls. And so a lot of the the, you know, we're talking about uh he's seventy five percent of the framing state. And so um. I I would think that from a framing standpoint, it it would probably be uh less expensive to keep it. From a foundation standpoint. Yeah, maybe a wash.
Alright, so. And uh you mentioned a lot of expertise already working with. Are you looking at certain valid clean energy also? Do you think avoid any expertise as you go to the building?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna lean on all of these partners. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, for sure.
What I'd like to do is we seem to be stuck on this. You know, should we scrape or should we do? The remote. And I'd like to. To underscore what I think the key points are, just to be perfectly clear. Could you go back to the the um site plan, please? Uh and a little to the left so that we can see. Okay, so I'll put this into into my language. Uh what what I saw before was the front of the. Building that faces Saratoga Los Catos Road. We thought that the that would be the south part of the building or at the top of the screen. We thought we were in the setback at least two feet there. With the existing building, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, the building to the left, which is the existing city hall, which is the old Red Cross building, it's got two pieces. Uh two parts of that structure that extend into the setback. So it is. Legal, it was built legally, but it's non-conforming today because it goes into the setback.
Yeah, and I and I just, I think maybe when it was built, it was built conforming to the twenty five foot setback from the R one eight. And now it's R one twenty as a thirty foot front setback. And so now just by by merging the two properties. It put the building out of compliance.
Oh, okay. I do know that the city of Monte Sereno bought. The building and the property from the Red Cross in nineteen ninety two for three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. So that and then there must have, I haven't seen the lot line adjustment where the two were merged. The two lots were merged together. Okay, now, if we were to scrape. Totally demolish the existing building. The post office building, we would then lose the. The square footage that were in the setback. On the west side of the building against Rose App, correct?
According to staff, yes.
Yeah, so so. You're losing square footage of a building. And you and if you connected the two to get to Omar's point, if you connected the two. You would then have, you would then be out of compliance with the two pieces of the front. So you're connecting in. A building that would be a new part of a building with. Part that's out of compliance.
Correct.
Anyways, okay. Um I just wanted to make sure that we all understood that, that. The cost of scraping it includes the would include the cost of losing those square feet. And if you wanna keep it, as Omar points out, let's have the building as big as possible. And that's what the committee talked about. Let's keep, let's make it as big as possible.
It's a pretty much an interesting point, but we already have a non-conforming building. Goes into another non-conforming, does that end in the book and form or not?
Two wrongs.
And and those other issues vary. And this sounds like if it has to come up for council. Uh council should consider that, that there are reasons can be granted. And that, but you know, it's a little complication. Uh but it it's something to, we could not probably not discuss now, but it could be something. Uh okay.
Did you wanna say something? Okay, so let's just walk through uh. Omar's letter. And as I read this. In its first bullet point, he talks about overflowing meetings. And I think. That what I've seen in Los Catos town meetings. They have a screen out front in their in their annex area. So that if there's an, if there's too many people that can fit into council, then those people can be outside of chambers. But they can still see the meeting going on. What we can do with with this building next door. The new building or the renovated building. We can have a screen in there, which I think is absolutely mandatory. Have the biggest screen possible. Permanently. So then if if we had a council meeting here and all of a sudden there were more people. That needed to go into the building next door, they could be watching the meeting. And then at the appropriate point in time when they wanted to come in here and make public comment, then they could come in and make public comment. It's just that they're not in the same room. So I think that that having the ability to have overflow. Is is important and it will give us that.
How many people could you accommodate like that?
At least fifty. I think I think the maximum occupancy is gonna be in sixty something.
Yeah, I was gonna say at least forty eight. Forty-eight to six, so.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think by the o- the fire department occupancy uh, calculations are are over fifty. Yeah. Um, and actually, the room is not as wide as this room, but it's actually longer if you count the the kitchen area. So it is, we have hold quite a few people. Uh, and they would be comfortable inside.
And I like his point where he says it's probably the most ambitious building project in the history of the city. So I think that's, that's a good thing. Uh, just one bathroom next door, but we actually have two bathrooms here as well. So if, you know, we have bathroom capacity between the, between the two buildings.
If I may?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we are actually uh. We read this letter, what, five thirty or something like that, and Jackie right now, uh, not, maybe not right now, but. Um, before that, we were looking at how uh, we could get another bathroom in here. We do think that would be uh, beneficial to have two bathrooms. Um, and so we're just gonna, we wanted to show that to the committee. Um, within the confines of the structure, how we get a pair of gender neutral bathrooms. Or isn't her or whatever we have, whatever they're going to be, so um. That's something that it's it's a good point, um, and. Uh, we're, we're gonna work on on seeing if that is something that would work without. Completely destroying what we created.
Oh, oh, that's a positive thing, that's very positive.
Yeah.
So we're, you're gonna take a look at it.
Yeah.
See if it could work.
Yes.
Oh, that's great.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
The shower probably doesn't have to be the most comfortable shower ever because it won't be used much.
Well, we can even maybe even talk about eliminating the shower. You know, that that, I I don't know if that was a hangover from the original design, which was. Really treated more like, like a, like an A D U.
Um, some of the history on that is that if we were dealing with a significant emergency. And we had some people that had to come here. You know, to the extent we could offer a shower, that would be a good thing for them.
Yeah.
But as well, if in. When you look at gray water and you look at other features, having a shower would be. A good thing in terms of being able to show technologies. Las Altos Community Center has one shower for their facility.
Other twenty thousand square foot.
Twenty-four five. But I have to say.
We, we, I think, I think we should take a hard look at, at. At the um. The practicality of the shower versus the second bathroom, which would get more use. Uh, I know once we get more use of the bathrooms, the restroom, but.
Or maybe one could be a combination restroom, shower.
Yeah.
And then separate restroom.
Well, that's what we have, we, we might be able to economize a little bit on what we have. We had a little extra space for storage and things, so so, but we're looking at, we'll, we'll, we'll present some options.
You can make it look like on a cruise ship.
That there will be a urinal in the, there is one in the plans right now.
There is one now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think that increases the capacity, if you will, versus having just a single toilet, so. Um, but anyways, let's continue, um. I thi- I think we talked about the the pathway, the breeze way between the two buildings. And if you were to connect the two buildings, I can see all kinds of issues, not the least of which would be sprinklers in this building. I don't know what the code requirement would be if you were to connect the two.
So yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of implications uh, when you start to connect the buildings. Um.
Finish floor, right?
It it starts with, um, yeah, we have a finish for height delta. That we'd have to to work on uh, within the building somewhere, so you have ramps. Um, uh, to make that all ADA. We'd have to work out circulation through what was already remodeled for through the uh, reception and the, and the. Clerk and the staff up front, so that gets all, so that's gonna get remodeled. Um, structurally though, when you connect, when you make an addition to a building. The rest of the building has to be analyzed from a lateral load, meaning the the side to side earthquake loads. And the, and the reason for that is that they, that's why you do an addition with today's standards. It's it's a stiffer building than this building maybe. And so in an earthquake, what's gonna happen is that building is gonna not. Uh, move the same manner as this building does. And so this building might have to be upgraded seismically. Uh, anytime you do an addition, it definitely have to be analyzed. So it has to be analyzed, and we do that a lot on additions. So so when the addition comes large enough, you have to take that into consideration. But for sure, you start to create one structure that's over the size that you would definitely require sprinklers throughout. Now, this not the end of the world, you could sprinkle this building. You certainly could.
Are the floors of the two buildings at the same level?
Um, I think we looked at that and it wasn't, we, we talked about that uh, one, at one of our earlier committee meetings. And I think that it was not, but.
So that that is another complication because that will be a step up or a step down and that would impact the ADA also.
Well, yeah, and then it would obviously, you'd have to create space to make that happen, so any, any. Uh, square footage that you're adding, you're taking some of it away for for hallways.
For ram.
Yeah, for ramps, exactly.
Question, what if we made the veranda? The, to to make it more indoor space, what if we made the veranda in between the buildings? If we could do that permissively and then added, you know, building where the brand is now.
So two things, one, two, two, um. The the breezeway.
Right.
Would to to uh, make that an interior space that's not allowed by the building.
Could you make the breezeway, give it that outdoor, you know, put tables there, give it that outdoor?
You could furnish it, use it however you want, yeah, yeah.
And then add the building square footage where it is now.
But yeah, point B is that the whole covered veranda could be actually more square footage. That could be another uh, annex or room uh, to to um. Uh, to be, have no interior space instead of exterior space.
Right.
Um, we, we would, we would have to change the roof, you still have the long, you have a longer uh, walkway, covered walkway. Uh, that would, you know, talk to this building, but um. At at the expense of losing that covered area, and so I think that's what you have to think about. Um, again, as on a value standpoint, uh, bathrooms, you know, restroom versus having one with a shower. Um, and the value of that and 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 um, and and if. We added that extra room, how how does that work with the other room? Um, as well, but um, it's, it's, it certainly is, it's ten feet by twenty, it's two hundred and thirty square feet. So you, to maximize the building. In area, you would do that whole thing. You would, you would fill the whole thing in without having that covered space. The covered space, we're planning on heaters and a nice skylight, and so that space. Uh, when used uh, uh, as as. This is functional for for events. It could be, you know, really a nice popular place to be, indoor, outdoor, it's so beautiful, and it's gonna be. Um, you know, sheltered from the street noise and so it's. It could be a very, it could be a very usable space, it could be someplace that, you know, uh, residents and or staff use. For lunch breaks or just to get out of the sun or whatever, you know, so. Um, that is something that you, you could look at as far as if you, if you were on a mission to get more square footage on the interior. I, although it it, it's gonna, it's sort of, they're gonna be a long rectangular room. So you'd have to see how it, how it, how it plays out.
Well, you, I mean, you wouldn't have to have the folding doors where they are now. It could just be, I mean, to the, the present design is carving away structure. Or aren't we bringing a corner of the building in?
No, 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 we're no longer doing that, we're leaving the. Corner, yeah, no, we're leaving the whole building intact. So so we, um, that's just a purely new covered roof area.
Okay.
So we, while we can take away all the doors, uh, and and extend the room. The volume of that room is is going in a different direction. And so you see the ridge uh, and the slopes of that ceiling, fault mats the roof. And it's a great natural extension of the existing vaulted ceiling. Um, and so when that, and that, when that wall comes back down to um. Uh, the outside wall where those doors are. Then you're, you can add, try to make it all one room per se. You would have a a very odd shaped room, it would have a flat ceiling, then it would go up and down. And it's, it's, it's not, uh, it's, this not, doesn't really work from an architectural standpoint, yeah. So then, then again, then you're left with a ten foot wide room, where this really uh, takes part of that um, covered porch. And it it's not only ten, it's about fifteen feet because it borrows from that walkway. And so the space is five feet larger than would be if you put a wall in place. It's, it's a, it's a challenging spot, it's, it's a tight dog, and so that's why. Keeping that the building and keeping that four and a half extra square feet, uh, extra linear feet by thirty is a hundred and twenties, two feet or something. Uh, it's, it's um, it has a lot of really valid reasons to keep it. And I think that it is not a big compromise to build around.
So. Um, the other issue, um, talk, uh. Omar talks about the N I C P and he says it can be easily accommodated within city hall or the community center. And one of the issues is that an N I C P. A a full-blown one is a separate standalone, well, is a, has to have separate access. You can't put an N I C P inside of another building. Like it's, it's supposed to be in case of a, you know, when, when an extreme disaster happens. So, so that comment, I think, is is not appropriate because of the constraints for an N I C P. And what we're going to do though is, I think, you can see in the top right corner. That little. Um. The claw exterior closet. The chief of police thought that that could be helpful. And it, but it's, it wouldn't be a full-blown N I C P, and what we really need to do in, in my opinion. Would be to look for a, a property that we could rent to put an N I C P on. South of Highway nine at the appropriate point in the hillside somewhere. That's what I really think we should do, but at least if you had, if you had a receptacle, electric receptacle. In that little uh. Exterior closet, and it's locked with a combination lock as N I C Ps are. Then someone could go that's being depo- being deployed to. Uh, the hillside that would then have to communicate with their radios to St. Mary's. Or to Dave's or to the Los Catos Library and I C P. The whole blown in I C Ps, they can grab the radios here, be deployed and a couple other things. And and accelerate what they've got to do. You know, so um, we are addressing that to the extent possible, and then the other thing is. There's no training for certs that are undertaken in the city of Monte Sereno. So having the community center have already been corresponding on the programming side. So that they can offer courses so that we can get more N I C P, or sorry, more cert-trained volunteers. So that it makes sense to then have another N I C P, I'm not sure. Go into that much detail, but that's what we're.
Yeah, I I think once we have it in place, an I C P is going to take longer to put somewhere.
Yeah.
Once it, once it located and once people are certified. Uh, one question I want to get back to is on this distance between the two buildings, it has to be at least eight feet or can it be more?
Uh, it's eve to eve is eight feet, so overhang to overhang.
That's the core requirement, yeah, that's a state requirement.
That, no, that's a local requirement.
That's a, yeah. Yeah, and is there a state requirement on that also or no?
Uh, the building of, the building requirement, um, I think on a single property, you can go closer. Um, but it's a commercial building, so I'm I'm used to residential, would do do multiple structures on a residential property. But it's generally, it's it's five or six feet anyway, so you really, you could maybe pick up a foot.
Okay. Thank you.
If I'm mistaken, I think we maxed it out.
Yeah, so I, I think the direction that the, when you came back with one of the first designs, the committee said. Gee, maximize the square footage of the building. You still wanted to have the patio so that you could get that sound buffer in the indoor/outdoor feel. And um, you know, there's a lot of no- noise.
Yeah.
If you were just standing in the breezeway, I think it would still be fairly noisy.
I think the only thing you can do um, is put a six-foot tall fence between the two structures. For Monte Sereno Co. You can't put any roof connection, you can't, even if it's metal, fireproof. Uh, we've tried, either, uh, in City Monte Sereno, they don't allow covered breezeways.
You should foliage, that slows the noise down.
Yeah, exactly, no, exactly, yeah.
I, I, I think you guys have done a great job of putting this together, this is a lot of different moving parts and. I'm glad you put a committee together because.
Yeah, me too.
And you're getting really good input from everybody on what what goes in there. So I guess the. Move on, just just stay rolling, get the city council to move whatever issue they're thinking and. Okay, I'm sure you come up with what are the changes that we could make, but I think you did a very, very job on it. Appreciate that.
Are there, I went through the points that I saw in Omar's email. Were there other comments that people wanted to make or, because this is the time to ask questions now, so that we make sure that we've. You know, and. Thought about things.
Yeah, I, I think it made common what we wanted most to put about it.
Yeah.
Well, he, he asked about the Highway nine access, which I don't think anybody ever wants to. Enter anything on Highway nine, I think it's much better, that's one of the points.
Well, well, I think he was not even cutting off any pedestrian access. Yeah, so I, by by connecting the bill.
I will say that what I've learned in the past year is that. The USPS said to houses that are on Highway nine, they weren't gonna deliver mail there anymore. So what they did was they put up uh, mailboxes on Rose App. And I think there's twelve or fourteen, and there are some people that are. East of us, down towards Los Catos, and they have to come up and get their mail here. So if you had that with, if you cut the breezeway off and it was one building, they'd actually have to go all the way around. This gives them a nice pathway to walk through. Whereas today they go through the driveway, so you know, they'd be able to go through the walkway, which I think is a good thing. So that's, that's a a benefit of having that separation of the breezeway there.
Yeah. If I may, uh, if you look at uh, the drawing that Omar presented. With the, with the, the idea of adding square footage to connect the two buildings as well as pushing out towards um, the street. To center the Los Catos Road. That's where we're talking about, it is, uh, it it's, let me say violation, it's acting into what. The setback is, right, and so, uh, I don't know how you do that without, um. You know, paying off the mayor, no, I'm not teasing, but um, how does that, I I don't know, that's not.
This city.
That's not what this city works out of, the mayor paid you. So, so we didn't ever consider uh, adding in that direction because it was. Uh, it was into the setback, and that that's just in working with staff, and they. Staff did not have any idea how there'll be possible. Staff did not have any idea how there would be possible to, to move anything out that, in that direction. So we dropped it, so.
Go ahead, nerd.
Regards to two restrooms, I think. A urinal, one person can only be there at a time, so it doesn't really speed things along. Also in a real disaster, in terms of a shower, if you don't have a washer and dryer also. Then the shower, as you know, good. So I, I would be more interested in having the two restroom possibility.
Mm-hmm.
Um, than the shower.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think one of the reasons for the shower is Los Gatos is, uh, offering free showers for homeless people for a while. And that came up in our last discussion that this could be used as a shower for homeless people. If he said sign up for it or they are not.
Hmm.
Uh. We don't really have a homeless problem in Montes Reno, not yet, but given the price of houses, some of us move to home, as I guess.
Hmm.
So that, that was a deep attempt. Now, I don't know if you can put a better, and I don't. Start designing, you can put a restroom in this new code around here, you know, create a little bit of that to throw a small. Half of bathroom over there.
Yeah, we're looking, well, maybe any bathroom we do has to be ADA compliant. So it's all, you, you've been into these bathrooms that are just, this is his room. And there's two, there's a fix, there's a toilet and a sink. You know, um, so they, they do take up quite a bit of space.
Okay.
So, um, we're going to see what we can do to make, to make something like that happen. Yeah. Yes.
I, if you had, I thought you just had to have one that was compliant and then you could have forty seven additional ones as long as. You have one.
Well, one per gender.
Always one good, but if they're gender neutral.
I think in existing buildings you have more flexibility, but any new buildings you have to have one per, that's how we just, that's how we, we understand it. But we'll, we can certainly, we'll look for any loophole we can get. You know, if, if there, if there is a, a, a way that we can, that will work. Yeah, sure.
Cause it, uh, yeah, it saves room to take that urinal out and make both of them gender neutral. That seems like a good idea. And with regards to homeless, we, we talked about that in committee. And, um. I thought it sounded like it would be a lock shower anyway, except for use. One day a week if we did that.
Yeah. Something like that. At least it's low availability issue. One thing we really have to discuss.
I was in, um, um, Santa Cruz area a few weeks ago. And, um, there's a church nearby near this place that we stayed. And they had, um, portable to, uh, showers. And they had the homeless, in, in the church was operating it, um, and it was really cool. Yeah, all these people were coming in and taking showers. That it was a portable, portable rigs. So.
If, if we have showers one day a week, we'll need people to, um, monitor that, make sure that people aren't staying. Clean up after, you know, I don't think the city employees would want to do that. So we need dedicated staff for that.
Or volunteers.
Or, yeah, and ones. I'm not an expert on urinals. Um, but if you have a small, if you have a small bathroom that has a urinal. Would, would two unrelated parties go in and use? That, I mean.
Most likely not, most likely not unless it's their related party. Exactly, exactly. I- in a, in a, in a community restroom where there's multiple stalls. Yeah, uh, then often thi- this is, that's how it is, urinals and toilets and, you know.
If you have a toilet.
The toilet itself would be in a, in a compartment.
It would.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So in this case, it is a single use or, or family use.
Yeah.
Or related use. Yeah.
And it doesn't really dress up the bathroom to have your own in it. I mean.
No, but the, the urinals though are really, um.
It's not.
The urinals are definitely, uh, water saver, um, and, um. Uh, they're actually much more preferred for men for urinating than in a toilet. And women prefer men urinating toilet, uh, urinal, right? So they'll go with everything. So, um. Uh, or all of us prefer the men urinating in the urinal, um. They have these flush, yeah, I, I mean, cause we sit on the toilet too, so. Is the fact that they keep, they keep the toilet clean. But, um. The advancement of urinal, I mean, they have all these flush free urinals that are amazing. You see them everywhere now. You see them in a lot of public places, heavy use. And so, um. Uh, i- it's, it's again, it's one of these things that you could tout as kind of a. Progressive thing, you know, on, so.
Can, can you do a urinal without all the other idiomatic stuff that you're talking about? No, so you would just one single urinal required everything? Can you do an idiomatic urinal?
Yeah, it all has to have all of that turnarounds.
Okay, so if we're talking about it, um. My wife said a urinal is a must have. She much prefers there be a urinal and a toilet. It's her opinion. I agree with that. You go to the high end, the highest end wineries in Napa, in Napa, and you look in their tasting rooms. Their bathrooms are very nice and they all have urinals. So, you know, I think that it's a must have.
Serious taste efficient also.
Yeah, very.
Yeah.
And, and with, with respect, it's faster and easier. And that's from my experience.
All right, good to go with that. So, yeah, I think that, I think the idea.
So your capacity is increased, right? Your throughput in a bathroom.
That's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so if we can keep the urinal, uh, we'll do it, it. We really want to keep that urinal in, in one of the restrooms. And so that's the, that's the parameters at the moment. If we find that the only way to get to the second bathroom is to eliminate a urinal. Then, then we'll put that on the table.
Uh, the other thing that we can do is we've got two bathrooms in this building. And if you go next door through this door here. You'll see exactly how big the bathroom has to be to be ADA compliant. It's pretty big. The one over there is not ADA compliant.
It's a retrofit, yeah, yeah.
So, um, we can do additional homework right here.
I've watched you guys design the urinal, I think that's the scar of our.
Make a waterfall.
Excellent. Okay, so, um, that's all I had to say about, about, uh, the, uh, the letter and, and.
Jack.
Omar's comments.
But I think it was a good letter, but, uh, good, uh, I have some other discussions and, uh, I wish you was here all the way through. Press forward with, uh, ideas. Maybe you should invite him to your next meeting. Dog.
This is all.
Omar, the lava?
No, this was open.
Yeah. Yeah, all of our meetings are open. Yeah, absolutely.
Um, well then, I think it would be good if we could, and I'm sensitive to the time, very sensitive since I haven't eaten yet as well, um. If we can put the cost estimate up, are, are we okay moving ahead? I don't have one printed out, so if you could put it on the screen, that'd be great. And then zoom right in. Okay, so what we have done is at the top of this, we've got what the costs are. And then at the bottom, we've got what the funding is. And we've got the soft costs and the soft costs are things like. The architectural fees, design fees, all of the, uh, engineering, all, all the costs that don't result in actual. Uh. The building itself. Then we've got the hard construction costs. That's the one point two. Uh, and that's was what you received a cost estimate on. And included in that, I think are some contingencies and other things.
Right.
Then underneath that, we have got the, um. I can't read the one underneath that. It's. Oh, furniture. There we go. So we've got. I, although I put in fixtures and equipment, it's really. The fixtures are already included in the budget. In the hard costs, but I just use. The terminology, but around fifty-five thousand, I think for, for a city council to look at the costs. If we just look at the building costs without the furniture, then it's going to be like a surprise to us. So that's why, why the fifty-five is in there. And then we've got website development and down below, we. Have a grant from Silicon Valley Clean Energy of five hundred thousand dollars. And we're. As part of our grant application, we said that we would have a website so that people could. Use a QR code and then from that QR code on something, they could then see. The, the details on the construction of it. What the details are on a heat pump, water heater, that sort of thing. So that's what the five K is in for. And then underneath that is a hundred thousand in landscaping. And, uh, I think that number may be a little light. But, uh, at least we've got something in there. So that's where we come up with the one point five million that we have to fund. And then if you say, what's the price per square foot? So in that, we're taking the soft costs and the hard construction costs, adding the two together and dividing it by thirteen sixty-five, which is the number of square feet. That's how we get the cost per square foot, because that's kind of a metric that, that people have. Uh, and then. So do we want to talk about the, the cost side at all? Do you want to explain anything, Gary, about the numbers that were? Put for?
Um, I, I just want to clarify one, one point that when, when. People talk about construction cost per square foot. Um. Generally that is hard costs. Um, and not necessarily permit costs and, uh, consulting cost, architecture fees. Permit fees, all that kind of stuff. So I think this is a great, realistic way to do it. But you, but the number might be skewed a little bit.
High.
Uh, if, if someone was looking at construction cost per square foot and they were talking about just a contractor, here's, here's what's going to cost the bill. You would say, let's take the one point two. Um, and divide that by the, the square footage of thirteen sixty-five and that probably would be a lower number. If you're not doing the, the one point three four, three four, one point three forty. So it would be a little bit less per square foot. So. I, it's still, it's still a high number because it's a small building and you don't have the economy of scale. So. Nine hundred, almost a thousand dollars a square foot is, is a lot of money per, uh, to build, you know. To build today where. Um, sometimes it's, it, it's often less, but you, but just so. The general population sees this and understands it. It's, it's a very specialized building. Um, and it's a very small building and, and, and it's contained. So those costs per square foot numbers are bound to go up. You don't have rooms and bedrooms and family rooms and all those kind of things to absorb that cost per square foot. So it just has some, uh, some perspective on that, that, that number, um. Is, should be taken with kind of a great assault.
Well, you raised an excellent point, which I had thought about, uh, some time ago. If you look at your most expensive room in a house, right, or rooms, it's the kitchen and the bathroom. That's where your plumbing costs are. That's where your cabinets are. That's where your sinks are. You've got specialized lighting, et cetera. And the ratio, as you just mentioned, of, of a great room, if you will, or a bedroom. When you only, if you've got, you know, the ratio wise. You should have a higher ratio of the quote vacant space to the bathroom, to the expensive space. And that brings down your cost per square foot, which is, I guess I'm just repeating what you said.
Well, thank, thank you. My, one question I had, just comparing would be budgeted last, when we pulled it last night for. Five hundred fifty-two thousand. Where is the cost? Uh, where, where does it initially go? I know we've got more coverage. Can we, it would be helpful to have a comparison thing. This is, this is what we butted for. This is what, what we're doing extra. That's why it's.
Well, so just to jump in real fast, we went from nine hundred. And forty-seven square feet to thirteen sixty-five. Okay?
Okay, so five hundred is an extra four hundred fifty.
Yeah, it's like almost fifty percent.
And construction materials and costs of.
Yeah, that should be presented. Not, not, not just the discussion, but when you're presenting to council, if you can have a table, say, okay, this is what we were going to do. This is extra what we're doing. This is why it worked it out one day. So we can, we're going to actually look at it on this day. That will be helpful.
Done. What were the, the, there you said, that you budgeted five hundred and something?
Yeah, what, a couple of years ago when it first came out?
Right, that's, that was the budget. But, um, I'm curious for what did the bids, what was the average bid cost?
So.
That's what we're going to conclude.
So I spent a time, we, the finance ad hoc committee of which Jav and I were on, we looked at that. The, we got three bids that were. That were, um, responsive. And we got one unresponsive bid. The highest bid was one three thirty-four. Million three. This is for nine hundred forty-seven square feet, but it included. The.
The patio.
The patio and the parking lot. Okay, so you'd have to take out the parking lot. The next one was a million and four. And then the next one was seven sixty-seven. And then the non-conforming one was six ten. And if you'd say. When I asked. Other people in the construction industry that are on the bid side, they're like. The person, the firm that bid one three thirty-four, they did not understand the same scope of work that someone built. Bid seven sixty-seven on.
Yeah.
And even the difference between a million four. And seven sixty-seven. They were bidding on apples and oranges. It should be tighter than that.
Correct.
So. Which is why it didn't get passed.
Well, I mean, that's, uh, it could go past, but, yeah, there was, there's some issues there. Uh, but it would be helpful to compare.
Yeah, no, no, your point is extremely well taken.
Yeah, therefore they do. Facilities you're providing, the kitchen, the bathroom, and everything else, lots of gray waters coming in, that's what's talking about it. And that's what we talked about in the, in the, yeah. So I think that'd be great to be compared. I think it may not. I don't know who will have those numbers. I guess you could probably pick those up. So that we can, no, I go to you together.
We'll, we'll do the analysis and, yeah, on the cost side.
It's interesting to hear that, that one, one three and one, one, one point four.
No, one million and four thousand.
One million and then the other one, yeah, so, so let's say it's a million. Um, and, and our estimate came at one point two, but for a larger square footage. And more covered area as well. And at a cost of covers for patio.
Yeah.
So, um. Interesting. So we'll see how the real numbers come down when, when it comes down to talking turkey, but.
Yeah, even in those guy in the school, they were bidding and what we made, we, we probably didn't budget enough, that'll be shit. But this could, you know.
Yeah.
From the challenge, it'll be really. Like, like, oh, you know, maybe if you just know all this, this is going to be something for the ages.
Yeah.
So looking at the funding side now, any more on the cost side? Any questions, comments on the cost side? No? Um, on the funding side, it's got City of Monte Serrino. We've got five hundred and fifty-two thousand that was previously approved. We've got the five hundred, the very generous five hundred thousand dollar grant from Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Um. We're, our objective is to raise a hundred thousand dollars from our community and I want to talk about that next. Uh, and then. Seventy-five thousand is the remaining, uh, federal unexpended funds. Uh, and then. The, another eighteen thousand in a resiliency grant, if we put in the batteries and make it a resilient. Community center. So that people can come to in an emergency or if the power goes off for five days and they can charge their cell phones and.
I'll be here.
Um, states, state grant?
No, that, that's, yeah. That's another SBC grant.
Okay.
So. Then we've got thirty thousand in what I believe we can get. So then we've got thirty thousand in what I believe we can get in donations in kind. I've already got some of that. Uh, where people say, you know, I want to put a heat pump water heater in here. I want to put all the fixtures in, that sort of thing, contribute those. We've got some interest uh, on that. So I'm putting it in at thirty thousand, looking at what is included in the one point two million in the budget up top. Okay? And then, so that gives you one two seventy five. We're also applying to Valley Water under a small cities partnership. And they've only done one of these, so we would be the second one. So there's no precedent to go under. But they, they do want, they would only fund this on a uh, a cost reimbursement basis. So it has to deal with our plumbing costs and our landscaping costs. So they're, they're interested in anything that reduces water consumption. And, and on a reimbursing us for what we spend on that. Which is very different than Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And then when you add up all the numbers, we're still gonna have, we're gonna be short around a hundred and seventy five. So the city council will have to come up with what's not included today as earmarked funds, another hundred and seventy five thousand. So that's what, what council will be, will be facing.
Tradically, I think the council, since you're adding four hundred square foot, uh, assuming budget for nine hundred forty seven square foot was five hundred fifty two thousand. Um, that's almost fifty percent more they should put in. They could probably ask for the two fifty thousand. Would be fair, because you're actually adding four square foot.
That's a great point, yeah.
Should, should look at that number and then constantly get rid of it down to something else that, that wants, but I think uh, if you're, you're right on the top, you're adding about four square feet, so. At the same budget level that was before, you know, the whole sheet of comparison, we, we just asked for that.
That's a great point. Comments?
And then they accept, and soon, poor people will give you money, make friends and whatever, something that's helpful.
Okay. Other questions, comments? This is, this is kind of the part where I've worked with, with uh, Gary on putting some numbers together. If not, then if we can go at twenty day, quarter date, if we can go to that last page. Please? So one of the things when you walk into the community center is what we'd like to do, and we've talked about this, is have a brass plaque that would show the community support for this. And there was a plaque that was done when the post office was added to the exist, the prior building. And there were a hundred and twelve names on it. And Monte Sereno actually hasn't grown much in population, but if, if we could get some community support in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars, if you scroll down, so let, let, actually, let me just talk about the plaque. So it would be cast in bronze, approximately thirty six inches wide, forty two inches tall. And it would have these different tiers. So the top tier would be made up of, say, three names. The next one would be six names. The next one would be ten. And then the bottom horizontal one would be twenty names. And then those five columns would be forty names each, so another, another two hundred. It's the typical, you know, platinum, silver, bronze type thing, but we'd use some different words to make it appropriate for the City of Monte Sereno. And if you scroll down below, please? There and zoom in a bit so we can see the numbers. Little bit more than my eyes. Um, so if we had three at ten gives you thirty and if we had six at five thousand gives you thirty thousand, ten at a thousand, a thousand, or ten thousand, five hundred times twenty is uh, ten thousand and then a hundred people, or sorry, two hundred people at a hundred dollars each is twenty thousand. That's where you get your hundred thousand dollars. And what we intend on doing is, I think I've got someone that's willing to volunteer to be the campaign manager for this. And uh, I need to close that uh, sale with the volunteer. Um, but if that's the case, then, you know, that person would orchestrate a campaign to raise this money. But I would like to say that we have, as of tonight, we've got uh, twenty six people that have expressed interest in this and said, if you structured it like this, they would be willing to contribute money. And that includes uh, I believe fourteen, either former mayors or commissioners that have contributed significantly of their own volunteer time, but yet they see the value in this for our community and they will contribute some money as well. So I think that's, that really is important. And I've heard from some constituents that have said, you know, you didn't do a survey on this. You know, how much support is there, you know, for the community center? And I can speak anecdotally to that, because a lot of people have talked to me, but this is right now, twenty six people have said, not only do I support it, but I will contribute some money towards that. So I just wanted to, I think that's very positive. And I think in, in the committee meeting, wasn't it Steve White that said he thinks the numbers are low?
Yeah, I think we can do one.
No, I think you're very good, Javon. You've got the five hundred dollars, you got the good. One situation I talked, there's a two hundred fifty dollar among us missing in here. When both friends contribute to fifty each, for about forty or something, and then keep the friends.
Yeah, I mean, I will defer to the campaign manager and what that person thinks. But this is more conceptual than, than anything. It's, it's, yeah. Um, but you know, uh, it would be, it would be good for a few, if we, anyways.
But I, I mean, it's good both ways. And then people who contribute to others can be committed also supporting this, so.
Oh, those are minimum amounts.
Yeah.
Right? Like, you can contribute two hundred and fifty dollars and you can still be in the friend category. It's just, you know, where do, where do you?
Yeah.
Okay.
What if, what if you get someone that wants to contribute five thousand but doesn't want to be um, called a sustainability advocate? We'll label it whatever they want.
And you see the other point, there's, there are people that donate money that want to do it as anonymous, because they don't want people knocking on their doors, but they do want to contribute to the cause. And I will say that of the twenty six people that um, have, have pledged their, some money, two people are not from the city of Monte Sereno. But they lived in the city of Monte Sereno in their youth. So I think that's a real positive thing. And that's why it says donors may be from outside Monte Sereno. So I just wanted to preview that and let you know that, you know, there's twenty, twenty six people that are so excited. They're willing to, to contribute some money. And uh, hopefully, if the next meeting, we'll be able to make an announcement on the uh, campaign manager.
Go ahead.
Is there anything else we need to cover? Oh, yes, we need to. Thank you very much. I would like to open this to public comment. There's no one here in chambers. If there's anyone appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand.
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. We will close public comments. And with that, if there's anything else, I, I, I would like to, before we close, to thank everyone for spending time tonight. And I know we were here yesterday morning, the committee was. And uh, Javon, your questions were excellent. And uh, I thank Omar for putting in his comments, because it really does, you know, make sure that we, we think this through. And Gary, for you being here and, and really taking us through the thought process, the design process, and what's still ahead. Other comments?
Yeah, I'm a little bit worried that there's nobody uh, Zoom, no, nobody dialed in.
Well, we do have to, I mean, other than Steve, we have somebody.
So how, how, how can we get more people involved? I know we have community members here. How do you get, I think we should all try to talk to our neighbors, to our, to other residents about this. Because I think what might happen, my biggest fear is that uh, this will just zoom through, that people get approved by the city council and people will say, we didn't know about this, what, what's happening, right? Yeah, so.
I do, I do e-blast to the listing that we do have, so I do let, you know, the community know that they need, you know, are being helped.
A, a, a good thing we're, because I could have done is set up a committee and normally takes us come to the city council and nobody's involved. You've got a committee, it's, you know, it gives a good chance to be there. There's more meeting courses going out with community and with council. So hopefully it take on. And another thing we're doing is getting a campaign manager. You're gonna find out and they're gonna be asking money that something is happening. I'm doing a little bit or not, but I, I would just give you a simple, if it's okay with the mayor to see, see. That is, you guys make comments, you could ask him if he needs to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Steve, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you, everybody. I've been a little under the weather this week, so I apologize. I didn't come in this evening in person. I just wanted to let you know, I've heard your whole discussion and it seems like it's going along quite well. And um, I just wanted to answer what the vice mayor just raised. How do we get more people from our community involved or knowledgeable of what we're doing here? And I have someone who is doing an Eagle Scout project. They've reached out to me and they want to perform a community survey. And the object is they have to start the survey from scratch. I plan on meeting that individual on Monday to construct some kind of a survey that we can send out to the entire community. If any of you wishes to send me questions on an individual, individual basis, like what types of questions to ask in the survey. Obviously, we don't want it to be too tedious, maybe ten questions or less. But I'm welcome to receive those via email and I can provide those to that um, individual. And um, then we'll go from there. We'll uh, we'll put it together formally. We could send it out, of course, via our e-blast system, you know, our, our news feed, perhaps our community newsletter. Put it on Nextdoor, social media, et cetera, et cetera. Um, highlighted at our um, picnic, you know. I don't know, of course, we could be starting in construction by then, but nevertheless, at least the community will be aware of it and they could provide their feedback on what types of uses and hours and such and such they would like to see from the community center or community room, I should say. I just wanted to add that. Good job, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Absolutely.
And your team.
I wasn't necessarily arguing to do a, a survey. I was arguing to do as much communication about what we're doing as possible. But opening up a survey has potential pitfalls also. Right, and, and let Steve mention.
Well.
Delay the whole project significantly.
Yeah, no, one of the things that was just published, and I received mine yesterday, was the Peaceful Mountain Monitor. And on the inside front cover is a message from the mayor. And I speak to the community center in virtually the entire message. And I, in fact, close with uh, with the statement where I says, where I say, when the annex building was expanded into the post office in nineteen ninety two, a hundred and twelve individuals and families donated to fund the expanding building. Expanded building. We will be seeking financial contributions for our community center and look forward to your support. So this should raise awareness to the extent people read this when it comes, but one goes to, I think, every parcel in the City of Monte Sereno. And when the campaign starts, then people will also know about it.
I have never seen that before.
You have?
I live on the border.
We will, we will put, make sure that your name and address are on your sign.
And did I have to sign up for that originally? I do. Okay. And I'm a relative newcomer compared to you, I think.
Yeah.
What it's saying, um, to let the community know, to get a different um, segment of people, what about having like an open house before the break ground? And just, you know, maybe do it in here and just have lemonade and, I mean, very minimal refreshments. And give people a chance to meet you or, and the architect and something like that.
What do you think that would be, if you have to do this?
Oh.
Of August. We're gonna break ground far, but if, if, if we receive the bids and council makes a decision to accept the lowest bid or reject them all, if they accept the lowest bid, then I believe we would be breaking ground fairly soon thereafter.
Alright, so, so, the, 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 kind of head is, if, I don't know if you can do a model of some sort that we could have at the annual picnic? Be sure what, what it would look like?
Like a real physical model?
Well, that's like going old school.
Yeah.
Eagle Scout.
Maybe a computer model, I guess, in a physical model, some sort.
You know, if um, if, let's say we break ground in seventy five days. Move that place, that, that, middle of June?
Yeah.
July even? I think that the form will be framed by your annual picnic. So people could walk through it and they could kind of see the, the, the guts, the shell.
Yeah, but they're not gonna come here. They'll come to the picnic.
Oh, we're. Yeah, but we could um, you know, we, 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 we do have a lot of renderings and so that shows pretty well. But to do a physical model, I, I think that um, I'd have to look at my rolodex.
You know, what's a rolodex?
Yeah.
Anyways, it's a, I don't know if that's gonna add to the coffee.
Yeah.
But it's maybe a good place for everybody to come and take a look at.
But how do you, but I think that, how do you generate um?
But how do you, but I think, how do you generate um, uh, interest now? In, in, and maybe they, it come to the next community meeting. To council me, I know, I don't. So. I think that, let me back up. When we went through, when we, the City of Monte Sereno went through the original design. That resulted in the three uh bids that I just, that I mentioned, and it came to council in September of twenty twenty one. That was the first I had heard of it. Okay, now, what we've done is all kinds of communicating. And we're doing as much as we possibly can. And if people are not interested, then, you know, like, it is what it is. What, what we could do, thinking a little bit ahead, is create a. A blog, if you will, in terms of, we, we talked about the, the um, the, the website. We could actually start to include some materials, so we've got a dedicated area. Where we can say, here's the result of the meeting, here's the minutes of the meeting, so that people, if they just wanted to look at that information channel. Relating to the community center. And I'll say it's a community center, it's not a community room, but, you know, then they could go and they can see the information. And, and you can record, you know, how many people are, are seeing that, so.
That's a great idea.
That's a great idea.
I think one other thing to get interest in it is to get people's ideas going on how that building's gonna be used. Because that's where the value is. And so. Yeah, just because I think, I mean, we can build a building, but unless it's used and used in a good way that benefits the community, then there's no point, but. That's where I think the excitement of it all could be, um, for instance. I cannot remember her name, is she on the committee, um? Help me out, Brian, what's um, the other woman?
Oh, she, she, she talked about.
Her daughter does, um, like, they help older people with um. Technology, and we can get people to write little, get a little Eagle Scout on this, um. You could get them to write a little bit on, there's a lot of kids at the high school doing different things in the community that could use this building. For their endeavors, um, just to be kind of interesting, just to see the potential uses for it. And get people excited about what they could personally use it for, cooking demonstrations, whatever it might be. I think that's how you could get the most interest.
Absolutely.
Because otherwise, it's just building.
And they could picture themselves using it.
Yeah.
And see the value. Well, that dovetails into the whole capital campaign side, because people aren't gonna. Contribute something unless they know what it's gonna be used for, so that's a, that's a great uh. Idea, and something that we need to focus on from a communications perspective.
Maybe that's something for the next uh meeting of the, of the community, he's sent a committee, where we will just brainstorming about possible uses. List them, yeah.
We wouldn't need Gary for that. He's spent a lot of time on this, okay, um, other, other comments? This is all great, I, I'm really glad that, you know. We're, we're having this study session.
And, and I appreciate your attention, I've been doing it more than just for Javon, he's looking at it. We'll be there.
Gary and Jackie.
Yeah, and Jack, that's right.
All right, well, with that, I will call, uh, I will adjourn the. Joint City Council and Community Center Committee at eight oh five PM.